Pursuant Chapter 30A, Section 20 hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is to be made of this meeting. Okay. There's the bells. There we go. Started off with public comment. Kathy, any updates for us?
Tonight.
Wow, okay. That's okay. And I, any other? Sean, you have anything? Anybody here? Yeah?
I don't have anything, but thanks for...
No. Public comments over, Gordon. Goodbye. See ya. Get, shoo, shoo. No, there's no relaxation.
I know that. Or the wicked.
Next item we have up. Yeah, why don't you get a chair so you can come right up to the table here, Gordon?
That'd be easier.
It will be. Update on our master plan. Peter, how we doing?
Well, we had a meeting last week. At the meeting, we heard from police chief. We received a letter from the fire chief. Committee members were very pleased to hear that information and I think supportive of what they understand to be ongoing progress of creating a new public safety center. We heard a report on the electronic survey that we did, and we had about 350 respondents, which is less than 10%, but apparently it's about what did it. Yeah, the respondents were pretty old, but then so were a lot of people in Glee, pretty old.
Enough of that.
The one thing that I remember notably was there was a question about the public safety issue again. Not to drum too hard on this, but it was quite a bit of support for the need to do something about relocating the public safety and the fire and the police. Seemed that among the five or seven percent of the people responded to the survey, the support was quite strong for that. And I gave everybody a homework assignment to deliver a week before our next meeting, which is the deadline for the homework, I think, is May 8th. I've asked everybody to send in to our staff one to five goals that they think the town should aspire to, and then we'll begin a discussion of that at the May meeting of everybody's preferred goals. We want to keep them general, so they would not, for example, discuss specific pieces of property or specific disputes, but generalized directions that we think the town should be moving. And then, once we have initiated that discussion, we're going to interrupt it a month later to get a report from the staff on the underlying conditions and a summary of the view of the town as ascertained from the public meeting and the survey. So I think when the plan is put together, it's going to be in two parts likely, at least the way I'm envisioning it personally. One is going to be a part that has a pretty brief summary, maybe 10, 20 pages, about the town, its characteristics, people, its land, its services, and then goals and objectives. And then second volume, if you will, tables of things like population changes over time, housing changes over time, all the tabular stuff that people who are really into the details might want to dive in later into. So I'm thinking that we're going to have a sort of a slow period this summer because we're going to have low attendance as people go on vacation. But come September, I'm going to start moving things forward quickly, and I'm expecting that we'll finish by Christmas. Oh, the other thing, not to forget this, the regional planning people asked for an extension of the contract for this and for the open space and recreation plan, extend the date until December 31st. And also, as a part of that request, they asked for additional funding for a survey of the businesses in town. And this was something that the master plan people felt was an efficiency in our data collection. We just didn't really have much contact with the businesses. And we did hear from the chamber, but they represent less than half of the businesses in town. So the regional plan people came up with this idea of using their economic development person to conduct a more thorough and comprehensive survey of all the businesses in town. And we found out from Chris Britton that there is funding available for that if it's approved, and Chris was waiting for a recommendation from the master plan committee. And the master plan committee last Thursday discussed it and voted to support the contract extension and the additional money. The amount will not exceed $10,000, but they're going to come up with a fixed amount. They know that they're going to get approved, so I would imagine that the amount's going to be very close to $10,000, but maybe a dollar or two less. And that's all I have to report.
Is, will that be on this warrant?
No, it's money already appropriated.
Thank God.
Some of the money is town money, some of the money is grant money.
Okay.
So there'll be no requests for additional funding, but if it's done, there'll be less coming back as a surplus. Now Kathy and Sean were there, and I think they're present in the meeting, and I would like to just offer each of them a chance to supplement what I said. They're both members of the committee. Is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
That is fine.
Kathy and Sean, anything?
Everything, yes, everything you said, Peter, is right on target there, and we did support the extension of the contract so that we can go further in depth for the business sector.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Kathy, thanks for allowing me to speak, but I really don't have anything to add to that. It's pretty comprehensive of where we're at.
Okay. That's great. We might have a master plan by 20, what, 22 years?
We'll have something.
We'll have something.
I predict we'll have something to bring back here for your deliberation early next year.
Wonderful. Wow. When's the last one we had was like '02, right? 2000? 2000, okay. Long time ago. Okay, moving on, we're going to start up the sausage grinder. Grind some sausage here. It's ugly, but it has to be done. At this point, I'm going to turn over chair to Peter, but I'll be an active participant in this because of my involvement with SDRs. I thought it would be best if Peter chairs this. So, all yours, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're going to be discussing short-term rentals, Draft 4. I think everybody around the table has a copy. For those who are attending by Zoom, it's a five-page proposal now that proposes to register short-term rentals using a town registration and has various requirements for short-term rentals. But it also explicitly permits short-term rentals under certain circumstances. So I guess I'll open the floor among the members for questions or comments before I ask for public comment.
Do we want to, usually how we do this, we just go section by section and...
Okay. Nobody has any comments in general to offer? All right. The chair is suggesting section and that.
No, no former participant.
Chair slash former slash participant. So what's new here from Draft 3, for those of you who've been following this, is that I did some research since the last discussion, and I discovered that there's a quite comprehensive definition of short-term rental to be found in state law. And rather than just incorporate that, which I think would be probably easy to administer for the people who are enforcing it, I chose to try to summarize it because it has a lot of exceptions to it that I think people in town are going to want to know when they go to town meeting and they see this. So B1, short-term rental, is the substance of the state law version, except for the exceptions. There's no exceptions listed here. And at the end, I've added a sentence that says that this definition is intended to be identical to that used for state law, state tax law, under Mass General Law, Chapter 64G or its successor. So if there's ever a time when anybody has to interpret what's covered, what's a short-term rental, what's not a short-term rental, they could potentially go to state law and see if that question has been answered at the state level and then follow that decision. So the rest of, like 13B is the same as before, but C, capital C, is new, and 90% of it is taken out of state law, 10% of it you've seen before. So in the state definition, they exempt hotels, motels, and lodging houses in the main part of the text. That didn't make sense to me. They have some exceptions in one place and some exceptions in another place. So I moved that down and I created a list here. The first item is hotels, motels, lodging houses, and bed and breakfast establishments. That should not be a surprise to anybody here. That's all that's been in there all along. Two is tenancies at will or month-to-month leases. That was sort of implied before because we had only said short-term rentals are rentals for less than a month. But here's a bunch of new things that I thought we should probably explicitly exempt. Timeshares, federal, state, municipal institutions, lodging accommodations including dormitories at religious, charitable, educational, and... So this would be like a Christian boys camp or a Jewish summer camp or something like that for kids.
Or even what Marion Fathers is. I think they have some places.
Yeah, they probably have something too.
In South Lee.
This is, again, from state law, privately owned and operated convalescent homes or homes for the aged, infirm, et cetera, religious or charitable. I don't know why they listed privately owned and religious or charitable separately, but they did, and I caught... And just summer camps for children up to 18 years of age or developmentally disabled individuals. I don't know, do we have anything like that in Lee?
Yes.
Big man. Summer camps?
Yeah. Lodging accommodations for seasonal employees by employers, you know, if we had at the farms, you know, maybe people would have dormitories for workers. I don't think any of our...
I mean, tank wood.
Black swan used to.
Black swan.
Those little cabins, when you start down the right away, on the left, those used to be... I don't mean to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm a member of the public, but I just wanted to point out that I don't know if they'd ever use that again, but something like that has occurred before, just so you know. And I have comments as you go along, different things, but I'm going to let you get your done, get done.
Alcohol and drug-free housing that is certified by the state. So that's a long list, and I don't like putting long lists of exceptions and things, but I couldn't, I didn't want to really exclude anything prior to discussion with you all. Anything here that you think we could do without, I would happily delete it, but I think we should be darn sure that we can do without it.
Right there. Which says lodging accommodations including dormitories, comma, that comma should be removed, shouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Timeshares. On four, that's what they do. If you have a timeshare available, you basically hit the time on your schedule and then use it through Airbnb or Verbo.
You can what?
You actually, once you got your weeks allocated, if you're on a point system, you can turn around and actually put it through Airbnb and Verbo and try leasing that way. So probably a good idea. I mean, who we got here? Would somebody do that?
They do right now?
They probably do. So if we're going to sort of exclude...
So they can continue to do what they've been doing. They're excluded from this regulation, so this has no effect on any practice that they are engaging in right now.
No, it wouldn't be under this.
Not if we have...
An exemption. They're the exemption.
Timeshares in number three.
So people can still, because they're exempt.
And they would be exempt from this regulation.
Yeah, 10%, yeah. They'd still collect their room taxes and all that through the state.
Yep.
Because they have to be registered to the state if they advertise.
If they...
At all. They have to be registered to the state.
But they wouldn't be subject to any of...
A short-term rental does, or a timeshare does?
Any short-term rental, if they advertise.
There's a timeshare, a timeshare, as I understand it, is not a short-term rental.
That's correct. So this would just allow it to continue, but if they did it as, if they advertise, let's say I have a unit at Oak and Spruce, and I advertise it on Airbnb or Verbo, because I advertise it to them, it rents to them, and I have to pay taxes, even though I wouldn't, if I went and used it for short-term. But if you went and used it and paid me through, you'd get room tax through the state.
Right.
We just...
Oh, yeah.
You better be clear about that, because otherwise, it's, otherwise, you know...
Copying what the state does.
Yeah. We should look into it further then, because it seems to me that it'd still be a timeshare, but because they rent it through Airbnb.
About timeshares.
Well, just so you can look into it first. I mean, we're not voting on it.
Does that, right, because that would be part of our regulation, they would make them exempt from any of these regulations, wouldn't they?
Right, so they could have, well, when you go through the other things you can't do, then I don't think they do many, well, we'll go through it. It's up to you guys how you want to handle it, but you might want to just look into it before you take an action, see what it really is, what does that...
Because that's why I was questioning.
It's an interesting proposal. I mean, it's an interesting thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments on C, folks?
Yeah, I had a couple just quick questions. We do have some homes that are licensed by the Commonwealth, by DMR, DMH kind of stuff, DDS. So when you say any federal, state, or municipal institution, or I didn't know if you wanted to add, or homes licensed by the Commonwealth, or does that get covered under, it's not really a philanthropic organization, privately owned, operated convalescent homes, that doesn't really cover it either.
Infer?
Maybe, but depends on which agency you're talking about, whether it's DMH or DDS. And that's just because people come and go. It's, they don't advertise, you know, they just get placed.
What about charitable homes?
It's possible. I just don't want to lose that or have them all of a sudden think that they have to meet these requirements, which I don't think they should or would.
Right.
You almost captured it in number 10, because there are alcohol, drug-free housing. I'm not sure that they're always certified by the state. Sometimes they're just privately run institutions and don't necessarily have a certification and have to be treated as single family. Okay. Well, if it does, then that's great.
Totally covered that, isn't it?
So Gordon, would you, would you look into this for us?
Yeah, I don't mind. Sure, just to see if, yeah.
Six and seven need to be expanded somehow?
Maybe, or just...
Doesn't depend upon licensure or certification of the home right now in six and seven.
Right.
Nature of the work that they do, or the clients that they serve, but maybe certification would be an important element there to add? I don't know.
I can double-check it, but I know that we have a home right here on Laurel Street that is licensed by DMH or DDS, and people usually stay longer than...
By them?
Yeah, usually it's longer than 30 days, but there are times, you know, they don't advertise, obviously, but they're placed, you know, people apply and they get placed sometimes.
But that would be the chronically ill, wouldn't it? I mean, mental health is an illness.
I don't know. It's, you know, you have to be careful how you talk about things these days. I don't know how the agencies feel about that, but I can check it out and get back to it, no problem.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think any of us here want to fly regulations to homes...
I get that. Absolutely, absolutely.
Right.
Sometimes it's a physical issue and not a mental issue, because DPH also runs some homes, so that it's more that the person needs total care all the time, almost like paraplegic type, and that isn't through DMH, that's through DPH. And again, I don't know.
Those are different funding sources, but I don't know why that matters.
Well, because they're licensed by the state, and if they're licensed...
Licensed?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely. I know what section of the law it's licensed through. So the only other comment I would give you is on number one, hotels, motels, lodging houses, and/or when you say bed and breakfast establishments, a lot of people call themselves that, they have to go through a special permit process, you know, and also they can be licensed under, under one of the chapters of the general law. I didn't know about adding the word licensed before bed or licensed bed and breakfast establishments. I don't know, because they are licensed.
They are.
Lodging houses. Yeah, it's just, I don't know if it matters, you know, maybe I'm getting too picky.
So the question for enforcement would be if somebody calls himself a bed and breakfast establishment?
Yeah.
Licensed as such?
Right. Right, and that's why I thought you should use licensed, like I could call myself a bed and breakfast and just go, oh, look, I'm exempt, but I didn't go through the planning board, I didn't get, you know, because there are three different levels of bed and breakfast in the law and that the planning board has picked, well, they picked it up in the 80s.
But...
Yeah. You have to go to a section of the general law, which I think it's Chapter 40, Section 21 and 22, actually. I can show it to you, Peter, so you can read it. So if they use that in the law, that's the section of law they're referring to, which does require a certain level of licensure, I think. I'll double-check on that, too, rather than waste your time on it.
No, I think adding licensed, if you say they're licensed, then I think there's no harm in adding the word licensed. Okay. And then...
Under number 10, if you're concerned about the certification by state, maybe it could be alcohol, comma, drug-free housing, comma, DPH, or...
Oh, it depends on where you want that one to land.
Right. But that, this one specifically says certified by state, whereas...
That's true, you're already certified.
Whereas number six and seven, you would privately own, and then religious and charitable. So...
Well, that's why I didn't know if number four was the appropriate place to put licensed by the Commonwealth. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know where it belongs.
No, this is good.
Yeah.
So number four is federal, state, or municipal owned, I think.
Well, that's why I didn't know what you were getting at, if you wanted to, and I understand. And licensed by the Commonwealth may not fit there, maybe it fits better down under number 10, which would be certified or licensed by the state.
Number 10 is something called alcohol-free and drug-free housing.
I know, I know.
I don't even know what that is. Is that, is there some category of housing?
Yeah.
State-certified, that people can't drink in?
Yeah. It's half my houses, and zoning code and most zoning codes, you have to treat them as a one-family home.
Okay.
Even if they have 20 people living there, because they're acting as a family, which doesn't have an upper-end limit to it.
Well, this is not the same thing as a mental health facility.
No, totally different.
Facility, yeah.
Yeah.
Home?
Yeah. It's like a group home.
So I have notes here on one, add the word licensed, on three, to talk more about timeshares, and on five, to delete a comma. Is there anything else that I overlooked? Let's go on to D. So I don't think I changed anything in here from Draft 3, but just to review, we're saying here that there are four categories of properties that cannot be used for short-term rentals. One is property owned by a corporation, trust, or partnership, with an exception. An exception is a corporation with a single asset, a single residential property in Lee, contains one or two residential structures in which is the primary residence of the entities, or entity's majority stockholders, beneficiary, or partner. So I tried to write something that takes care of the family corporation.
Or trust, yeah.
If it's the large corporation that's going to hold multiple properties. Who is, somebody is sort of subleasing from a short-term rental. If you rent for a week, you can't sublet for three days. Other, three is affordable housing, income-restricted housing, and four is property that violates the fire code, et cetera.
Would you consider adding zoning in the bottom of it? Or current violations of building, or zoning requirements? Well, that's not a violation unless it's cited. Non-conforming structures all over the place, people live in, and no problem. Rent it out now.
How would we say it, then, Gordon?
Well, let's see, property with current violations of the building code, fire code...
Zoning code.
Zoning, zoning regulations or an order of the Triton Board of Health. I mean, that kind of captures everything I can think of that somebody may have an issue with.
The objection, any comment on Gordon's change? Sound good?
Or thought? It doesn't have to be a change, but just, I'm just thinking.
Well, I've written it in, Gordon, so...
Well, it may catch things again.
I think, you know, some, I'll worry a little bit about overbreadth here.
Yes.
Many regulations about performance standards and stuff that are pretty trivial and that are not enforced often, and so, but I think this is probably better than not having, having is probably better than not having.
It leads to fall back, and if it's not cited, it's not a violation. I mean, it is, but it isn't until technically you write a violation notice.
Says current violation, so...
Yeah, so if it's not cited, then somebody can be put on notice by getting a violation notice, and then they may have to address it faster.
Okay, so paragraph E is prohibited agreements.
One more quick question on D2. You know, we had this debate in the past. This is basically saying that the, it's going to be for, as an STR, operators, an STR, can be a long-term tenant, not necessarily a fee owner. I know we had this discussion before, maybe it should be relegated to only if the owner has the ability to use that property as an STR. Or I think the way you wrote this would allow a long-term tenant, as long as his long-term lease allows him to use the property as an STR. Is that, is that our intention?
That's how I read it.
Actually, it's a little bit, it's a little bit less restrictive than that. A person who's a month-to-month tenant or a lessee of, say, a year tenancy is not affected by paragraph 2. The only group that's affected by paragraph 2 is a short-term rental landlord. By a lessee as a short term, who's acting as a landlord to sublease it, another, sort of a sub, short term on a short term. Already a short-term rental, I'm already a short-term tenant, and I want to lease to you for half of the week that I just rented. That's what this is about.
You use that term in B2, maybe you should look at the definition and make sure everybody understands that you're using...
What term?
STR landlord, you're using that, and it's defined as B2, so if you go back and look at that, maybe that would help everybody understand a little better what you're talking about.
Page one in the...
Back to the definitions.
Yes.
I always go to definitions first, just to see what it really says. To me, when I first read it, Peter, I would just say, first I started to be confused, but then I realized that you meant that the person who was doing the, had the right of occupancy after that sub-rental occurred, that I could go... I realized that you meant that the person who was doing the right, had the right of occupancy after that sub-rental occurred, that I could go, and so that helped me understand.
Yeah.
Not a little bit?
I just misspoke, I think, I think a person who is, Peg, do you want to say something?
No, I was going to say, can you explain that to me a little simple?
Yeah, I, well, I, I want to take back what I said a minute ago to Conrad, because I think it applies to a person, restricts a person who's a tenant. A tenant might be a month-to-month tenant, or a person with a year-long lease, who wants to act as an STR landlord. The person who lists the property on her own.
Of the fee owner.
Okay, it's prohibited unless it's in the lease, but you have permission to do that.
That's what basically D two is saying, yeah.
You read it the first time, yeah. Everybody with me on that?
I just want to make sure I understand it, sorry.
So we're talking about.
No, I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you're saying that the owner must know about this, D?
If the owner, let's say Conrad is a tenant, your long, your long tenant, and you're the owner.
Okay.
Conrad is going away for a month, and he wants to do a verbo. He can't do it unless you have said in the lease that he can.
Gotcha.
You as the fee owner.
Yeah, the owner, okay, thank you.
Maybe you could clarify that, by saying that a little better than just who has the right of occupancy, like, make sure that in the definition that it's that it's intended to be written into the lease, the permission, or something like, I don't know if you need to go that far.
Well, it says explicitly authorized.
Okay, yeah, no, I get that, I I get that. Who else gets that, what that means?
I probably wouldn't have, being asked about.
Explicit authorization could mean it's in the lease, it's, it could mean you just write a letter and say, yeah.
Exactly.
All right, go ahead, you you have my permission to lease for the Fourth of July to tangle with people.
Yeah. But it should be something in writing.
So what do you, what do you want to change, Gordon, what do you think?
Oh, I, I, I don't know. It's written authorization somehow.
Say real estate owner, does that?
It says the fee owner.
Fee owner, which is the real estate.
Yeah.
Explicit, um, written.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say fee owner in number two under definitions, B two.
I don't, it doesn't need to.
Oh, okay, well, I guess, um, let's see.
I, I don't know, I.
It's the right of.
I sort of like the, having an explicit.
It will be.
Explicit, what explicit?
We're just making sure that it's going to be.
Okay, no, I know, but.
What is it that you want explicitly?
That the owner knows what's going on on their property.
Okay, so, and we use the word.
No, that's what we're trying to do.
I know, I know, but Gordon mentioned.
You and I had this debate a while ago, and I heard the whole fee owner and what happens.
Mentioning.
You know, a tenant comes along and he does it without the authorization of the fee owner.
Right.
I mean, if I was a landlord, I'd be a little irritated.
Yeah, yeah.
This D two kind of fixes that, where it's going to be explicit.
So, I think my question would be, does explicitly authorizes, does that take out the possibility of the he said, she said?
Explicit authorization could be in writing or oral, and if it's oral, then it could be a he said, she said argument later.
Yeah.
On the other hand, the fee owner and the long-term lessie could be in fine relationship, and trust each other, and handshake is fine, and there won't be a problem.
The only one who can authorize a STR is the fee owner. And a tenant does not have the ability to lease this property as an STR at all, it's just the fee owner.
That would be an option, that's a, that's a more difficult option for the tenant, and maybe more control for the landlord. So you, I mean, you're just.
That's where I'm going, is the, the fee owner should have the control of what is done with the property.
We, we could do that by putting in explicit written authorization, right?
I, I kind of think that's a violation of the tenancy, you know, to say, Peg is renting to you, you have right to possession, but if you go away, she can rent it on verbo? No, I don't think so, right? I mean, it's your property to use or not use as, as per the lease. So if somebody's going to be initiating a verbo or lease, I think it should be the person who has the right to possession.
Possession or ownership?
Well, I think possession, I don't think, I don't think the owner gets to supplant the lease just because the tenant is absent.
Some, some leases even say you can't sublet, that's up, that's up to the owner, not up to us, and if they say, if they don't say that, then you could sublet.
But like, so.
Who's the registr, who's the registration name? My tenant, who's going to have.
Who's going to be the.
File registration.
It'll be the STR landlord, which is the tenant, acting as STR landlord, the tenant would be.
By definition.
Yeah.
That's coming up, um, it's, STR landlords are the ones who have to register.
Yeah, which, that's the way you'd want it.
Which could be the long-term tenant.
Yes, it would, yeah. But I, I think the most important part here is to, how to make sure we word this, so that the fee owner, owner of the property, knows what's going, is, gives permission. And, and it's, is this strong enough, explicitly authorizes?
Or is a handshake enough, or do you want to force them to have a writing?
That's what I'm wondering, fee owner explicitly authorizes the tenant in writing, use the property, maybe that's it.
I have a question for you, Peter, we haven't gotten there yet, but on this whole, I assume there's, you have to register with the town, that's what a lot of towns are doing.
That's the last section.
Okay, um, it, just as a question to you, because I haven't read it, um, would it just leave the language the way it is, wouldn't it be easier to make sure that on whatever the registration form is, that you could just have, if you're a short-term landlord, you know, we also need the signature of the owner, you know, to show that he understands you may be doing this?
Well, the registration is once a year.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I think the I'm envisioning that the landlord would be consulted for a period of short-term rockets. So if, you know, if I were a fee owner and I had a tenant who wanted to use STR, I would say, um, sure, you're going away for two weeks in July, go ahead and do verbo. But to sign a blank permission to use at any time, for in any degree, for any length, you know, any length, I wouldn't.
Okay, that makes sense too, that makes sense.
I don't know if that intention is clear, though, let's, let's keep that in mind.
Yeah, I just wasn't, I hadn't gotten that far yet in my reading.
So I'm, I'm adding in, in writing here, in two, in the second line, two, since that's the consensus of the board.
I think so.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, you ready to go on to three, or E, rather?
Yeah, he's here, no hand up.
Okay, hi, Matt.
Matt and Matt.
Hello.
Matt and Matt.
He survived Aruba.
Barely.
Matt Curlino and Matt Comer.
Oh, Matt Comer, hi, Matt Comer, okay.
How are you?
Good, anything to add yet, Matt Comer, are we, are we doing okay?
You're doing great.
All right, don't, don't hesitate to chip in if we start getting off the rails here, okay?
No. Okay, do you want me to control this meeting?
Oh, no.
Well, I wouldn't go back.
You're not his boss anymore.
No, I'm not, I never was his boss, never was, no, just his overseer, but not his.
Overseer, I see.
That sounds.
Step aside, Gordon, I got this.
You got it, buddy, I'm just going to sit here and watch.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, I know, so far you've been pretty darn quiet.
By design, my friend.
There you go, that's a good thing.
Okay, so E has got a series of prohibited kinds of agreements. You can't do more than the maximum occupancy that you're registered for. Um, you can't use it for commercial use, you can't rent to a minor as an STR. And then we get over on the page.
Desert, and not to be a pain in the butt, what's a minor? Under twenty-one, under eighteen, I, I honestly don't know, I'm not being a wise ass.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Okay, I, I just didn't know, because you have college kids, you have, you know, prom night, you have, you know, I just, I just didn't know.
I would say under eighteen.
Well, that's what I kind of thought, so if you're eighteen, you know, is that cool? You know, prom night, you're going to violate the occupancy load later, but.
Eighteen's a legal minor, right?
And, and that's what I'm not sure about, that's why I thought perhaps, uh, Peter had.
I'll put in eighteen, somebody can check this.
Right, go on there now.
Okay.
Eighteen's when you can vote, so.
Hmm?
Um, and I'm pretty sure you can be accused of a crime at eighteen, so away we go.
Well, and yet you can get married when you're sixteen or seventeen in most states, so, and I don't want to go there.
Um, page three, please.
Yeah.
Oh, these are the regulations, and we have a little over a page of those, uh, I don't think I've changed anything here from the past, but I'll review it with you. Um, the first one is, has to do with events or gatherings where attendance is more than twice the advertised maximum occupancy.
So. May I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Be matter, Matt may have to talk, or he may just want to listen, my question is, let's say there are single-family dwelling units, whatever, it's just a dwelling unit, um, how do you think someone is going to come up with an occupancy number?
Uh, well, I don't know how they're going to come up with it, but they're going to register it.
Right, that's what I wonder.
They're, they're already registered with, as an occupancy with their.
You have to put an occupancy with the state, perfect.
With your, with your advertising.
Okay, great.
And that maxes out at a certain number also.
That's great, because, because I know that there's problems when you're trying to do a single-family maximum occupant load under the building code, it's very problematic, and the same with the Board of Health. You know, the health occupancy loads based on number of people in a bedroom and sewer flow and all that kind of stuff. So I just wasn't sure, but if you're telling me the state already does it, good.
Not necessarily the state, but the, the, uh, your advertising platform, your, your marketing platform. Whether it be VRBO, they write, what they register with the state is a DOR.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, I think the, um, the person who's doing the registration is going to be the landlord, the STR landlord.
Okay.
When most cases will be the owner, some cases could be a long-term tenant. Um, that person's going to have to think, now, what do I, what sort of occupancy have I got here, how many beds have I got? If I got three beds, I'll register three as a maximum occupancy.
Or six, two to a bed, or?
Well, they might, they might, if they want, if they want their property, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe abused, they would put in twenty-five, I don't know, you know.
Well, that's why I didn't know where you came up with that, as long as it's a number that somebody can, like, the zoning enforcement officer can, can have it, and I can say, look, this is what you registered.
So now, if, if I have an STR registered for three, and I have three beds in it, and I rent it to Johnny Doe, who's graduating from college, and he invites fifteen friends over. That could be a violation, and that's what F one says.
Gotcha, okay.
Just to pause, sidebar, go back, um, all states define an age of majority usually as eighteen persons younger than this age are considered minors.
Seventeen and down.
Care of a parent or guardian unless they are emancipated. Oops.
It's probably by a court.
Yeah.
So seventeen and under basically is a minor.
Yeah, I'll put, I'll put in eighteen, and we don't have to have that discussion again.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wasn't sure.
Uh, two is.
So, hold on, STR tenant, should that be STR landlord?
The tenants conducting the event.
Gotcha, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's when you have those big parties, no, not you, when you're sublettered.
No, they don't, and, and believe me, that's the whole thing, um, I think STR landlords want these regulations as much as everybody else, because nobody wants the parties and trash to your property.
I, I get you.
Nobody wants that.
You got the neighborhood, you're disturbing also.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then, yeah, then it just.
I like your number two, that's good.
Paragraph three is about keeping records and making them available, keeping them around for a while so they can be checked. Paragraph four requires a property manager within the state who can be called at any time and respond within, and then we, we changed this in response to a letter, it used to say thirty minutes, I think. And we changed it to two hours, is the response time, I think that's reasonable, if, uh, you know, especially if it's the middle of the night. You got to get up and put your, you know, jeans on and.
Just call the police.
Face. Uh, paragraph four is, oh, paragraph four is the manager. Um, paragraph five says, uh, comply with requirements of septic. Uh, and it gives a citation to a state regulation.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we really need that, um, is that, or do you think that's helpful for people to find out what those regulations are, or?
They can check with the Board of Health somehow, you might want to, because that's who enforces Title V, and I'm not sure it's an MGL, Title V, um, under Title V, I think Title V is under a reg, is a regulation, not a law, but.
No, MGL is laws.
Yeah, I know, but when you had MGL, Title V, I didn't think that was the name of it, but I'll, it may be.
Um, I'm, I'm just asking specifically.
Where'd we steal that one from?
That's, that's always, that's always.
Is that from Otis?
Again, I think that was in the Otis thing, Buck.
Yeah.
I don't know, somebody want to, I, I can't share and look up the Otis reg, but I have the Otis reg here. Somebody wants, anybody want to look in the Otis reg to see what they say about septic?
Okay.
It says, wait, on disposal?
Yeah, then they just, they just mentioned MGL, three-ten CMR.
Yeah. And I.
MGL, what?
MGL, three-ten.
Three-ten.
Yeah, but three-ten's a CMR, not.
CM, I know it is, they, they list it as MGL, though.
Shouldn't be listed as MGL, that's a definition, so three-ten CMR fifteen is Title V.
Yeah, I, I think for that, I would take out the MGL Title V.
Or, or you can leave Title V and just get rid of MGL, I'll, I'll double check on that for you if you want, I mean.
Well, if it's going to say Title V, it should say Title V of what?
Yeah, and that's, I think it's of the three-ten CMR.
So what, where are people landing here, I've heard people say get rid of Title V, I've heard people say get rid of CMR, what do you, what is?
Look up Title V, Massachusetts Title V, see how it's listed, I didn't think it was under a general, I thought it was under a regulation, step down from a GL.
You know what, I'd rather just say nothing, I'd rather just say septic regulations.
Five is the, that is the.
That is the septic, that's the private disposal systems are, have to be built to Title V, if you're on a septic, like for town, you don't have to worry about it.
Right.
That's a different issue altogether, that, that's under a different.
Well, this is. I think if you call it Title V, you, you cover yourself, I mean, we, that's how we describe it in real estate.
Yeah.
Right, you don't use MGL, though.
No, that's wrong, um, Title V is three-ten.
Yeah, three-ten CMR, that's what I thought.
Wait a minute, Title V is a statute, CMR is regulations.
Yeah.
Title V is a, is a regulation, it's not a law.
Oh. No kidding, how did it get to be, how did three-ten CMR fifteen point zero 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 get the lovely title of quote Title V, end quote?
You have to ask somebody from the Board of Health.
I, you know what, because it was, it was section five, at one point, it was.
This is lost in the midst of time.
It is, as they often say, onward to the fog. That's a state worker statement.
I love that one.
Forward to the fog.
I like that.
All right, here's, let's try to order this this way, do you want to cite any law at all, or not?
You have to cite Title V.
Yeah, I, I think that's okay.
Have to cite the law.
I agree.
The regulation, it's not a law.
That are in this, that are allowed in this facility, uh, to true Title V.
Right, Title V would limit the number of occupants.
So, I mean.
Based on sewer flow.
On sewer, that doesn't make any difference.
Right, exactly, that's, that's what I was saying, this is private disposal on-site versus town sewer, which is totally different section.
And it says right there, each STR property relying on a septic system, so that's.
Sure.
Only applies to the septic.
So, let me just try you, Conrad. What, how would you have, have this sentence read?
Just the way you've got it, I would just take out MGL. And leave it as Title V and associated state regulations, leave the three-ten CMR fifteen.
Peg, how about you? Is that good for you? Take out MGL? Peg?
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter. Yes, I think that's wonderful.
Dave, is it good for you?
Yes.
Okay, I, I don't know if I read this, how I would go about looking up what Title V is. Where would I go to, would I go to Google? No, I would go to Buck Donovan's iPad, because he's got this moment, but.
If you put in, actually, here's.
Let's just say, see Board of Health agent, something like that, or see Board of Health. Uh, cuz they're the ones who regulate it. And observe the installation of the system.
People think they know what this is. I'll, I'll keep going. It's got a, it's got a name that apparently was plucked out of, you know, of the.
Actually, if you put in.
Everybody, but everybody knows it as such, so.
We do, cuz look at, it comes in. If you just put in Title V, the second, the second thing is septic systems and Title V.
Alright, I lose. Alright, let's keep going. If Google can find it, I'm happy.
Well, right now, we got, this is not, this is our current Google, AI Google coming up, might be different.
Might be different.
AI Google might be different.
In California, they might come up with California.
You got it, who knows?
Um, alright, paragraph six, each STR property does comply with the regulations of the Board of Health. Is subject to inspection by the Board of Health, this is all the same. Seven, smoke and.
On number six, can you kill the word inspector and put official, building official, not building inspector?
Is the building capital, is the word building capital?
Yeah, you can do building and official both capitalized. And a building official includes both the commissioner and the locals that work under a commissioner, so it captures all.
But that's not the person's title, is it? Building official?
Yeah, oh, well, there's building commissioner slash inspector of buildings.
Yeah.
Local inspectors.
And this, and, and the concept of a building official applies to all of them, right? But then it's not capitalized.
Um, okay, then don't, okay. Uh, whatever.
We did vote to change our building, uh, inspector to building commissioner.
Well, yeah, that means that a building commissioner, if that's the zoning force, that means the head of the department, which is Matt. It would be not Ryan, who is the local inspector. And a building official, they're both building officials, they just have different titles based on who's in charge of the department. In charge of the department.
Hey, we're up to seven.
Subject to inspection. What, periodic inspections, a annual inspection?
That may come out in the tenth edition soon, but until then, it is up, the law allows it to be up to the individual towns at this point until the state regulation gets put in place that may oversee it. And generally speaking, the way the board was looking at, the Board of Building Regulations Standards is looking at it, if it's owner occupied, they'll probably only be looked at every like five years for the building side. So to your point, the Board of Health, Fire Department, they can all have different timeframes. You know, but the building officials, where it's addressing, or no timeframe. Uh, if you just leave it the way it is, I guess then each individual component piece will determine when the inspection should take place, whether it's annually.
As they do now.
Um, the building code spells out, they have what's called a periodic inspection table, and so certain uses have maximum duration periods before you have to go in and look again. You know, as far as residential type things, not one and two families, but things that are short-term, I won't go to, hotels and motels and dormitories. You know, hotels and motels, because they're not an owner occupied thing, they are, they're like annually.
They're supposed to be inspected annually.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Are they?
Yes.
If the, if the department's doing what they're supposed to do, yes. Uh, some, and apartment complexes, common spaces, could be up to five years. It, it's up to the official. It could be one year, it could be three or five, or whatever they want, but it can't go beyond five years.
So are, if we didn't have this sentence, would STR still be subject to inspection by the Board of Health, the Fire Department?
Yeah, I, I, well, I'd leave it in the way you have it.
Advisory.
Yeah.
Remind people that these other laws apply here.
Subject to inspection or subject to periodic inspection?
Um, it could be either way, I don't know that it, it matters. Um, subject, cuz if somebody gets a complaint, they can't just walk into any single-family home anytime they want, no. They don't have the right to do that, unless.
Would this give them? Under.
Uh, if it's, if it's an STR, it would give them a right to set up a policy and a procedure.
Okay, but here, here's a scenario, I, I stay in an STR.
Yeah.
I notice there's not a single fire extinguisher, smoke, anything.
Right.
I can make phone call.
Sure you could.
To the local.
And they have the right to come. Absolutely, absolutely. You leave it the way it is, if it's periodic. You know, I don't think you need the word periodic unless you want it, but I think just subject to inspection is okay.
I mean.
They have a right of entry if they get a complaint.
Yeah, same with Board of Health.
Right, they, they may have to notify the owner. If the owner says no, they go get an administrative search warrant, they go it anyway. There's a process already in place.
That makes sense.
Ready for seven?
I'm leaving one.
So, yeah, I think your warning was fine, Peter, with that.
Okay, so I've got a change here, and at the end of the six, it says, and building officials, so.
Yeah.
Alright, seven is about smoke and CO detectors. Um, where they have to be placed. If, if it's on, there's two levels, you have to have an extinguisher in each level.
Does that come out of the federal, uh, the state DOR?
I think that came out of Otis.
Well, they, so they just, they're just saying that, which you can say, the state's giving you the right to go above and beyond what's really required. So you have that right. So, that's all. Cuz generally, like, a single-family home doesn't have to have an extinguisher, but it's great to have it there.
But I'd, yeah, if you're.
Oh, I, I agree a hundred percent.
Not just one downstairs behind the ax, you know.
Right.
Well, you know your, where your extinguisher is. They're coming in, they're not gonna know where it is, so.
Think about it, the, the rental possibly would be upstairs and have no clue what the downstairs setup is.
That's a problem with a lot of these.
And they don't.
Emergency lighting, you're not required, you know, you get there drunk in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I don't think there's a problem with this adding it. Compliance with state law and regulations, I might add, and regulations, cuz the state law on smoke detectors, the law in one forty-eight only deals with buildings that were built before nineteen seventy-two. Anything since nineteen seventy-two is captured under the state building code at the time. So you might wanna say state law and regulations.
And regulations are not part, are not part of state law? I mean, you're.
It's.
State law means statutory law, right?
Yeah, yeah, the laws are different than the regulations and.
Well, the statutes are different than the regulations, but they're together, the law.
Okay, but the regulation is different. Regulation, it's held to a slightly different standard when you go to court.
That's true.
Um, so if you just add in regulation, you're gonna capture.
Okay, okay.
You're gonna capture a better a- authority to go in and require this.
Or is it some other place where saying state law without saying?
I've tried, I've tried to make sure that I, I told you to put in regulation in there.
Thank you.
Because I fight that all the time.
You two really understand?
I know.
How none of this goes beyond, I mean, I'm getting it, and I've been around this a little while. Do you know how much the comment Beth over there, what are they arguing about?
It's, it's the little things.
It is, and I've learned that.
There's a skill to drafting bills and laws.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a doodle.
There you go. It's a stick man on a hang thing, and it's got my initials on it.
Got a little cap on it and everything, right? And, and the one holding the rope is, has glasses on? Any of us.
Order, order. Okay, eight is, uh, off-street parking spaces?
Oh, I just wanna finish the last sentence yet. If there's more than one habitable level, it should be mounted on each level, so like basement, first floor, second floor.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure I understood what you're going for. I got no problem with any of that.
You're renting the basement, I don't know why you'd rent the basement, I suppose a walkout.
Do you have a walkout?
Yep.
Yep, some people will say yep louder than others.
I cannot get any.
It's the garden level.
Oh, I like that.
Okay, I have, I have, I have more windows in the basement.
Yeah, I know you do, I know you do.
Well, how is it the base?
It's the garden level, it's, it depends on the amount of back, let's not go there.
But even in, in, in the NEC, I'm trying to figure that.
Yeah, okay.
Cause you're, you know, there's requirements there for basement, and I did it as a basement, just cuz it's more.
It's more restrictive.
More restrictive, but I'm like, and none of my guys, our inspectors can't answer it. It's like, it's a walk.
Show you in the link of what it is, but we won't.
And there's a percentage, if it's more than.
Right, it's considered a story of our grade.
Yes.
Yeah. Not a basement.
Oh, boy.
But if it's habitable, is that the point?
Yes, habitable, you can have habitable space in the basement. You can also have it on the garden level walkout.
I have two.
Personally, subterranean.
I don't understand what these guys are talking.
Come on over, Wilson.
I just.
I have a, I have a walkout.
Yeah, that's it. No, no, not at all. Not necessarily.
No.
Alright, let's, let's move on to eight.
Eight.
Alright.
Any comments on parking? Any comments on trash?
Well, I, I mean, really? I mean, I think parking, this is very big in this.
That's a lot of parking. I'm not arguing against it. But if you have a three-bedroom that you're renting out for the weekends, and a family comes up with one car, that's great.
But if it comes from three different states.
Yeah, but it, it's also gonna help, I think, in the long run, with your issue of don't rent it out to twice the occupants.
Yeah.
I think, I don't, I'm not against this.
Three-bedroom can be rented to one person and, and two of their family friends, right?
Absolutely. And we've had that, yes, absolutely. Or four cars. I've seen it, sure.
Especially if there's more than one bed per room.
Yeah, absolutely, you know.
Just a, a sidebar, we, we, uh, we have a group of visiting nurses that get together every year now.
There you go.
Four of them come in and four cars.
There you go.
How many bedrooms do you have?
Two, right? Or whatever.
Well, this is the alternate.
This is a secret?
This is the alternate.
Can have a fold-out couch too, I mean.
It's got sleep six. Plunk beds and.
Sure.
Alright, I think we're up to nine, trash.
Okay, with the three plus one.
Everybody, yeah? You, you Conrad, you?
I'm good.
Uh, ten, posting telephone number of the property manager. Uh, a map that shows where's yours and where's not yours.
That's a great idea. Is this out of the general, this?
Out of Otis, I think.
Okay, I didn't know if that was.
That's a great one right there.
That, that's really, cuz we run into that problem with our, one of our neighbors.
Um, and then how to run any wood-burning fireplace, pellet stove.
Do we wanna expand that into, um, any combustible stove? Propane, could be propane.
Oh, I see, I see. I figure, I sort of figured pellet stoves are harder than propane stoves, but.
They are.
There's a lot of people just putting in gas stoves. And now.
You, you wanna say any, uh, well, a, a gas heater is likely to be automated with a thermostat, right? I mean, I guess unless you have a.
Some have igniters, but they, they have safety systems, but.
So I guess we could say any heating device that's not the main, the main house heating device, or?
What?
So you wanna make sure you're not, you don't say something where they.
Yeah, but how would we do?
The gas stove, you know, it's like.
Yeah. Yes.
You know, I wouldn't get real worried of them.
Let, let's leave it then.
What you got here is probably.
You all right with this if we, if we keep going?
Yeah, I just threw it in there.
No, it's a good thought.
Eleven. Advertise been offering the short-term rental should include the Lee STR registration number, and shall state the maximum allowable occupancy, and Buck says that's already required by the commercial advertising services, that latter part. Can't advertise more than what you registered for? Any comment on eleven? Twelve. Is a continuing, a duty to continually describe the, in an accurate way, the names and contact information for all the relevant people. So if the property manager gets fired in the middle of the year, then the, uh, registering landlord has to come in and tell us who the new property manager is.
Should you have any kind of timeframe on that, do you think, or do you think just stating that you can need to do it, you know, is there a reasonable?
At all times, I don't know, like, yeah, yeah, I suppose anytime you rent, I guess.
Within a week, or before the next, before the next rental? I'm just throwing it out for you guys to.
Yeah.
I, I don't have an answer.
I don't think it'll come up unless somebody files a complaint, which means that there's been a rental.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the, the violations will be short-term, I would think, and.
Okay.
Okay, now we get into the registration section. Here's the information for the form. You want me to go through this, you guys, one by one, or do you?
You have a question on A. Location of the property, by street address and map and lot, I think we need to be specific.
Are people gonna know that?
Um, the landlord damn well should, if they're registering, if this is the initial registration.
Hey, Beth.
Call the assessor's office.
Map and lot number?
No, but if she's gonna rent the darn thing, you're gonna look it up. Well, what's gonna need is.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just.
Your zoning enforcement person in the fire depart, fire department's gonna need it, at least a street address.
Street, right.
Without a doubt, you know, so at least.
Yeah.
Location of the property by street address. And lot can help down the road for looking up what shape your property is, and size and all, but at least I think it should say by, by street.
Well, strike location, I'll put in street address, is that okay?
Yeah, the locate, yeah, the location of the property by street address. I, I think that's plenty. Okay, sure, whichever way you wanna say it, as long as it comes in, it's the nine-one-one address, they're good.
Description of the uni, of the property and the units offered for the rental. So it might be, you know, the upstairs back up the stairway. Whatever. Maximum occupancy, we've already talked about that.
Should you put per rental?
Possibility per rental?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz if you have number and the units you have, so you could have multiple units.
I think so either. I didn't think you could have a duplex on both sides rented. But I don't, I maybe.
Well, multiple units would be your multiple, say you had, you have two listings.
Okay, two different locations.
Two bedrooms.
Oh.
Would be two separate listings.
Oh, so you, you're saying at least they'd nee- need to know that they're gonna share that. Share that with another couple they don't know.
Yeah.
I haven't run into that one yet, okay.
No, cuz that's how a lot of the bigger places, you'll, they'll have, they'll, they'll have different listings for each bedroom. Or you'll have.
And just no shared kitchen or something?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I, I haven't seen any, I don't do this, so.
So is that one STR or is that two STR?
They actually have two separate listings. Or what I've seen, you have, uh, three apartment. People live in one, they rent out the other two. I mean, not in this town, this town's different.
I didn't say, I didn't think you were allowing.
There's a house in Lee that rent, that does Airbnb by the bedrooms.
The bedroom, so you'd actually have two.
Anyway, yeah, I mean, why not just go to a frickin' motel then, or a hotel, what's, you know, it's like, why not, then at least it's private. Maybe you're going with another couple and you want them to pay for their house.
Yeah.
There's too many.
It's a lot of very, and a lot, and sometimes it's price. I mean, when I go down to DC, I, a lot of times, that's a situation I'd be in, cuz I was there for four hours to sleep and drive home.
Right, 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 I'd say.
Okay, the next three things are name and contact information for the characters who are involved in the rentals. A copy of the rat, valid registration with the Mass Department of Revenue.
Wait, I'm sorry, G, G one, uh, G one F, property manager's name, twenty-four-hour telephone?
Uh.
That's the one that, property manager's the one that gotta be available, right?
Yeah, so think that's implied, Conrad, without, you think you have to say it?
I think it's, I do think it's implied, because we already require them to be available twenty-four hours.
We did say in, in F four, shall maintain a twenty-four dash hour telephone number.
In the bylaw?
Yeah.
This is the registration.
Yeah, 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 so I'm just saying that the.
There's different documents. Different documents than the bylaw.
That's a good point.
We could add to it.
Wouldn't hurt.
It wouldn't hurt to add to it.
Town clerk should get the registration. Town clerk's not gonna have the bylaw.
Right.
Right, so, so where do you, where does that take you? What, what do you conclude based?
The registration should show the twenty-four hour emergency number for the.
Because it's the same term we use in the regulations, the twenty-four hour emergency.
But this is the document, this being, uh, registered with this town clerk.
I think also if you, if, yeah, no, but if you have an emergency and fire department, building official, border house, somebody, police need to get hold of this property manager. How are they gonna get it if you don't have it on the registration form?
That's, that's where I was going with it.
Yeah.
And, and the property manager, a lot of times would be the STR landlord.
Quite, quite often, yeah.
Hopefully. Uh, that's.
But I think that.
We, we did allow that and I tell you from the forums and everything. When people don't live nearby is where the problems occur.
Exactly.
I agree with you.
Or somebody's not consciously managing it.
Right.
You know? Cause there's so many, I mean, the, the beachfront especially is, is crazy.
Um, G is the registration with department of revenue. I didn't see any hands go up about that, so let's keep going.
Well, Peter, you were curious. Did you get my email on that? Six and six?
Six and six.
Six percent.
Oh.
Of room with STRs only. They haven't added six percent, uh, state tax with them and then the town gives six percent.
Mm-hmm.
The rental.
So it's twelve.
Twelve total. Yeah, it's hefty.
Yeah.
And where's that paid?
Paid to the department of revenue and then revenue shared to the town. Yeah. Um, not everybody's aware of it, Gordon. A, a couple of people, a lot too, didn't know that.
Yeah, we get money back.
We get, we get snide remarks all the time, like we're, we're, you know, getting under the books and stuff like that.
Well, I, I thought that there was no charge until Buck.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, there is.
Look, and there's, there's several different kinds of charges authorized in the mass statutes. There's a special thing for Cape Cod. And then there's a thing called impact fees. Get another three percent. Hold your socks, but we don't have that.
No.
We could impose an additional three percent.
Places too.
As an impact fee.
Right, right, yeah.
That was the one I thought, that was why I thought we didn't have it, cause we didn't have the impact fee, but we do have the base charge.
Yes, yeah, right.
Okay, H, uh, is a statement of, you know. Health with respect to all requirements of health and safety and fitness for habitation and, um. Buck, did you have a question about this?
I did. Um, when, and Gordon, you probably know this chapter pretty well. And it's, there's a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah.
And, and my worry with this one, if you had a, a overzealous neighbor could, could really take this regulation, pick it apart. And you'd be in viol- I mean.
Even if we don't say it, if we don't say it, they still have to do it. They still have to.
Okay.
Use regulations, just like your house would if you didn't rent out your house at all.
I mean, like one very difficult one comes up right away. You gotta clean the bathroom every twenty-four hours.
Uh, I've never seen that.
It's here.
It's, it's not, not in fitness for human habitation.
Yeah.
No.
Give them a site.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, give me the site on that, cause I've never heard of such thing. Cause if I, if I have a house and I rent it out, I have to meet the, you know, the standard for human hab-
So.
Human habitation.
We would.
Going in and cleaning.
Four ten, four ten, one fifty-one. This would be shared facilities. The owner of any dwelling in which any toilet, wash basin, shower or bathtub. To be shared by the occupants of one or more dwelling unit or one rooming unit. Shall maintain the toilet, wash basin, shower, bathtub, walls of her sanitary condition and which shall include cleaning and sanitizing of said fixtures at least once every twenty-four hours.
So what that is though, in your situation where you're renting out two different bedrooms with shared, with the shared services, I don't care about those people. Let them clean the bathroom. Uh, I think that's an unusual thing. Most people would go to your place.
Yes.
And, and, and you just want to leave you clean the place. You know, there's no, it's only when I share a place with you or Peter and we're in separate bedrooms, what we share a bathroom.
But a lot of times, a lot of times the, the, the tenant will be sharing the landlords.
Then, then let them clean it. And who's gonna complain? The neighbor's not gonna know. You know what I mean?
Screens on the doors?
Yep, absolutely. Screens on windows, screens on doors, screen doors, if you're gonna leave them open.
If you're gonna leave them open.
Um, you'd have to go, I'd have to go back in, but I know that screens on windows absolutely required without a doubt.
So Gordon, my, my sense is that these regulations, I didn't look at them carefully. Stuff about cleaning bathrooms make me think about sort of the old days when, you know, there'd be rooming houses.
Yeah, exactly.
Bedrooms would all share a bathroom, right?
Right.
And so that's what that regulation was probably aiming at.
I agree.
But in, in rooming houses and apartments, there's a kind of a mismatch between tenant power and landlord power.
Mm-hmm.
So I think having regulations that help strengthen the tenant's case to make the place habitable makes a lot of sense, but in short term rentals. If I rent from Verbo in Buck's place and the bathroom isn't clean, Buck's gonna get a bad review. And he doesn't want that. So there's a, there's an equality of market power here, I think.
Well, I, I'm gonna bring this up in a couple of other places, but if you really look at this, it doesn't matter if your bylaws says this or not. You could delete number H and they still have to do that.
That's right. I think that's great.
You don't even need the language.
I think number H.
Yeah.
Well, what makes me nervous as is gonna the angry neighbor for other reasons.
Oh, yeah.
Find number H.
Sure.
And use it.
But we see that now in just regular apartment buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, by the tenants. Uh, they'll not.
If, if it's not needed, I, I.
The only question, reason I can think it would be needed is assuming that the jurisdiction and the enforcement power is there anyway, as Gordon said.
Yeah, yeah, it's there. Yeah.
Helpful to the STR landlord to know that he's gotta face these regulations.
It's a statement that he's registering.
Yeah.
He's registering and somewhere on the form it says, I certify that I'm. This stuff.
And.
It's kind of a warning of, you know, go look this up and see what, see how it's gonna go for you. So it's a favor, I think, to landlords.
Yeah.
Mentioned it here.
That's fine, as long as you know that it's not a, only a requirement because of the town saying it, cause the town doesn't need to say it. You know what I mean?
So Buck, what do you, you're, you're a landlord. What do you think? Does this help you or not?
Well, I'm thinking when I'm doing this registration and then I go to that chapter, I'm gonna be like.
Hermit's wreck.
And how many of them do you think are gonna actually do any of that stuff?
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
So what's the reg- your registration's gonna be a check mark that we?
Uh, we shouldn't have.
Habitable?
If, if they're not gonna do it, then we shouldn't have.
Well, it, it's a statement that can be held against them later as a.
Yeah.
Violation of the zoning that they didn't, they didn't do what they promised. That's about the only thing. Maybe, do you have a revocation of the, uh, registration if that's in there, if you violate anything?
Cause also, I mean, we're allowing. Unique rentals. You know, cause we say any, uh, um, furnished accommodations. Okay, um, if it's seasonal, it might not have a full heat system.
Oh, I know.
Which is required.
You, you have, yeah. Uh, again, you have, uh, there, but the, the health requirements also deals with seasonal use at times in one section of it.
Okay.
I believe. We can look it up. Like, y- you may only be able to use it. It's almost like summer camps from April until October.
I mean, as crazy as, and, oh yes, but you have to get waivers.
It's possible.
Is in there.
But that, that's up to the owner. They have to go and do all this if they wanna, if they wanna rent their place out or don't rent your place out. I know.
Are we doing the renters a favor by having this here or just adding to their woes?
I think it would be burdensome.
Okay.
When, when it's already implied.
Would you like to take it out? Take H out?
I would love, yes, I would like. I, I think it's burdensome and, and it doesn't benefit because you're already required to have this stuff.
Peg, what do you think?
I really have mixed. Pardon me? No, I have mixed feelings, um.
Okay, Dave?
I wanna know.
Matt?
Uh, Matt Carlino and Matt Comer. Oh, sorry, I, you're.
All right.
That's all right.
It's okay with me if you take it out.
All right, I think the majority was.
To leave it in or take it out?
Yeah, yeah. Says take it out. Dave says take it out.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm fine either way, to be perfectly honest with you.
Let's take it out.
I'll go along with the board.
Okay.
I think we should stay in, but just really, cause it's a registrar.
Oh.
Yeah. You ain't got enough money, Dave.
Little apron.
You don't have enough money, buddy. I know you're well off, but you don't have it.
You looking for his feather duster? Please let me get that image out of my mind.
Okay, um, a statement that residential smoke and CO detectors are installed and maintained.
Uh, I like that.
Again, you better add him state regularly because MGL one forty-eight twenty-six F is only applicable to buildings that were before.
Okay.
Two.
So.
Once they're under the building code after nineteen seventy-two, then they.
So if we.
They have to meet this, the regulation, so state law.
How about, and, and regulations, okay.
Now you've captured the whole, the whole scope.
And we just take out, we don't even cite.
I'll take out the numbers.
The numbers.
Yeah, you don't have to, cause I, I think what you may find is that will mislead people and not realize there's other things they have to follow.
Always the risk when you cross reference stuff.
I know, believe me, we run into it all the time in the, in other.
Yeah, it's a statement that a fire extinguisher is mounted in a clearly visible and easily, easily accessible location on each level and inner area in the kitchen. That's just.
Habitable level? Since you used habitable level before.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
We got three of them here that are all, you guys got it down, I tell you. It's so good. It's so good.
I'm one of them, I'm pretty sure, but I'm not sure what M, what, what, what group I'm in.
Well.
You're just one of them.
I think Matt, you're, you're also.
Yeah.
We read through a lot of these and we know the gist of what we're trying to do.
Right.
And, and you, you read through the, the zoning bylaw. Oh, yeah, that looks good. That's all set. And then you guys will say, oh, but, but you gotta, you gotta should instead of shall.
Yeah. That's true.
And I've learned shall, shall and can is way different.
Way different than should.
Should, yes.
It's permission of shells mandatory.
Yeah.
Okay, K says if you have to say whether there's a septic tank or a sewer. Or you list the number of bedrooms. And if it's septic, you describe the bedrooms under the septic permit and the date the la- was last pumped. Is that okay? If served, over on the next page, if served by composting or innovative or alternative system. Statement shall include a currently valid maintenance agreement for that system. So this is the composting toilet.
Now you need to get permission from border health to do anyway. And the plumbing, a variance from the plumbing.
Anything on that then, and we keep going?
Yeah.
L is whether it's, has a water supply or a well. If a well, you have to state that the well has been tested within five years. And found to be potable, et cetera. Anything on that? M, statement of the number of off-street parking spaces available.
No, just statement is your statement or does it?
This is the STR landlord.
Supply, you have to supply documentation thing, you think, too?
Just a state.
Just a state, okay.
So there's no site plan required?
Right.
Location of property, yeah.
Well. Subject to special permit?
No. Just a registration requirement. They come in, they tell you what they're doing. If, anybody can go look it up later, but we have to, we want them to be careful about what they register. We want them to provide enough information so that we're sure that there isn't gonna be, I'm not sure, but we're unlikely to be a problem and some assurances that they're gonna be complying with the regulations.
So there's no, no approval from, or site plan approval from the board?
Right.
Okay, I'm just making sure I'm clear on.
Yeah.
So this.
Actually, there's a big question here that we haven't yet talked about, which is should this even be in zoning? Because in Great Barrington, it's a selectman's bylaw.
Probably corporate bylaw.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I, I think it's a big issue to talk about. I'm not sure it's really in our wheelhouse in zoning or not. So I think, I guess we have talked about it a little bit, but.
One of us Jeremiah two.
Let's get to see this first.
Do it at the end, yeah, we'll talk about.
Okay, so two says everything that's in proper form and has the fee. You give them, give them a registration number, which they keep from year to year. And they expire as on December thirty-first and you can renew, et cetera. You know, it's two hundred dollars or otherwise set by the select board. And H is the enforcement and this hasn't changed.
Every year?
Two hundred dollars, uh, every year, yeah.
Is that reasonable?
It's a reasonable, thank you. She said it.
No, I was just asking, is that a reasonable?
So I, I think we could set it several ways. One would be to cover the costs of keeping the registration system current.
Yeah.
Work time, the filing costs, the answering questions time.
Yeah.
And in that case, it ought to be around a hundred bucks, I would guess. Or we could have a more ambitious program where people actually get called out and have to go enforce some of this stuff that they say they have to do. In which case people like Matt Comer would be sort of busy on occasion doing stuff under this bylaw. And we probably ought to charge a little more to cover the costs of enforcement.
How much do we charge businesses and like rest to check their ancil systems and all that every year?
Matt Comer, do you know the answer to that?
Uh, well, they, they actually apply for a certificate of inspection and it's a hundred and fifty dollars.
Annually, okay, and that is a real inspection.
Whole hotel, hotel.
Well, that's, that's when they have to be inspected. So if they're done yearly, then yeah. If they're done fi- every five years, then every five years.
Who's doing?
Yeah, what if they, do you know, Peter? I was just curious. I was just wondering about the fees. I mean, you know.
Well, I think, I think what you need to, to remember is that if, if you're paying this for registration, I would keep it a fee for the registration to keep the registration process going. If you need inspections, as Inspector Comer just pointed out, he's gonna charge for that based on a fee that's set between him and the board of selectmen. The fire department's gonna charge based on a fee. The board of health is gonna charge based on a fee that they have. So I don't think going overboard on the registration fee to cover inspections, I don't think that's, in a way, a valid way to think about it, because if there are inspections individually by those departments, they're gonna charge a fee based on their fee schedules. So I think at this point, what you're looking at is the fee should probably reflect whatever you think keeps, is a fee for the service of keeping the registration open and your clerks time, that's all a reasonable fee. So it could be fifty dollars, it could be a hundred dollars. I wouldn't think it would be more than a hundred dollars for this section. And then individually, you're gonna get whacked by the other people if.
If they.
Depending on if they even do inspections eventually. At this point in time, it, it's proposed to be a required inspection under the state's building code. We don't know if that'll go through or not. Based on anywhere from one owner occupied anywhere from one to five, nano owner occupied annually.
Okay.
That's the proposal and I don't know if it's gonna go through that one.
The, uh.
Fire, fire and health will do the same thing.
In Otis, they have three fees. Not sure I can explain what they are. The fee to submit an application for registration is a hundred and fifty. This includes a pre-licensed inspection, which we don't have. Then there's a fee for license issue, which is five hundred dollars.
Boy.
An annual renewal fee for non-exempt property STR is five hundred dollars. That's Otis. So I guess they don't like these guys.
Oh, they also have.
I think also they could, they might find themselves in court because that's not really a fee for service. It's more, there, there's already been a court case against Boston Fire or charging people. Or things that should have been out of general taxation because it was generally spread as a benefit to the whole town instead of a fee for their service and to cover their costs.
Yeah.
So they could be in trouble if they're ever challenged, I think, on that. I, I would keep it lower so that we don't get challenged on whether it's, should be covered by the towns.
Right, so what do you wanna do? Do you want a hundred dollars, you guys, is that?
Could we start there and then we could always increase it? If we wanted to, not every, you know.
I just, I was just trying to be solicitous at the time.
No comment.
Money just out of it. It's like. Money just out of it, it's like, I think less in this case may be better to start off with.
I just worried about Matt Colmer's time, not so much inspection, no, 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 not so much just inspection, but enforcement, if he has to go to court or issues citations or things, it's all going to take time, and I don't think it's going to be fee generating, so.
No, but that would come out of general taxation, it's, if it's enforcement of zoning bylaws, it's for, it's for the betterment of the entire town. So that should be carried by the burden of the taxpayers. But if it's something specific to one pro- property only, then, then it's a fee issue.
So, um.
I suppose the town's getting revenue lost.
You're getting six percent anyway.
Yeah, that's true, you don't, you don't have to worry about nickels and dimes when you're getting that kind of money, right?
It, I think it's adding up, I'd like to
It has to, has to be.
We were, I think it's adding up, I mean, we, like I said before.
Yeah, and you have one.
Yeah.
That was just, we're one people. That's just, that's the six percent.
So it was thirty-five hundred to the state and thirty-five hundred to the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, to me, to me, a hundred dollars is, would be more than adequate for a registration fee and maybe even fifty bucks, wouldn't be unreasonable. Uh, because of all the other things you're going to hit on the road.
That was both of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, still, still.
Still a good amount of money.
All right, so we're up to enforcement, paragraph H. I got a hundred in here, yeah, okay, sorry, well, I should have been clearer, Gordon. Enforcement, uh, no change to this, uh, I think it's the same as Otis.
There's no penalties.
Yeah.
I think there should be.
This is, this is assuming that there's a penalty for zoning violations that would apply here, and if it's not going to be in the zoning regulations, then a section has to be added. Actually, I think it's not the same as Otis, now that I look at it again.
Zoning bylaw has many things that can be cited as violations, noise.
No, no, what I'm saying is this enforcement provision assumes there is a zoning, that, that STRs can be enforceable with the same penalties that zoning violations can be enforced.
It's in zoning, you know, that, it would be different, are you going to keep it in zoning, are you going to put it under the corporate bylaw?
That's, that's the point I'm making.
That's where you're going to have to clarify that maybe, you know.
Notice, the first offense is a hundred, the second offense is two hundred, the third offense, and subsequent is three hundred.
That's zoning, that's zoning bylaw, uh, that's under section twenty-one R.
Well, it's under Otis bylaw.
Yes, it should be their zoning bylaw. It should be.
Um.
Who knows?
I don't think so.
Well, I know that that's one of the things that you utilize, those numbers you utilize for zoning in front.
It's the same numbers as
Yeah, it's the same numbers, no matter what they use for a ticket.
Was one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, and then revocation? Then revocation?
Do they, you're asking me if Otis provides for revocation? Yes.
And then revocation, after the third
Suspension or revocation. Says, says very simply, violations may result in suspension or revocation of the license.
Okay, and who makes that?
It's not registration. Yeah.
Makes a determination on the violation, is it the building commissioner makes that determination?
What determination?
If there was a, an offense.
Yeah.
Trigger a hundred or two hundred or three hundred.
Yeah.
If it's a zoning, it would be the zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
Whoever that may be in notice, probably the building official.
Okay, and then, does he have the ability to revoke, or does that have to be directed to the Board of Selectmen?
I would think that that would be whoever Otis has as the issuer of the certificate, which would probably be not the building official, wouldn't probably revoke this certification, that would have to go, you know, that he may designate, he may cite someone for violations. And once it gets to the third violation, then I think that, I would assume Otis's Board of Selectmen would then, you know, step up, but let's look into who actually issues the certification. Does it come from the Board of Selectmen after it's filed with a clerk, found to be right and forwarded, now who issues that certificate?
In Otis?
Yeah, I'm just saying, and who is it listed here as issuing it? You're just registering with the clerk, but you don't get a certificate, like, like, what, you don't get a
Get a number.
Okay, okay, so who has, who issues the number, the clerk?
Yeah.
Computerized program, so who's gonna? I, I think this is good, you had, you have the Board of Selectmen, right?
Yeah.
No, wait a minute.
Yeah.
This assumes that this is going to be part of the zoning regulations.
Yeah.
And violation would be a violation of the zoning regulations, which are enforced by Matt Colmer.
Right, for violation notices.
And in addition, paragraph H says, in addition to all of that other stuff, here's something else, it could happen to you. So this presumes that this is going to be in the zoning bylaw. And if it's not going to be in the zoning bylaw, which I think is a serious question, uh, we got to write a new enforcement section.
Possibly.
More like what Otis has, more like what our zoning bylaw has.
Then it comes out of one ninety-nine.
Yeah.
I don't, say that again?
If it's not going to be a zoning bylaw, then this comes out of one ninety-nine.
Oh, it's, it's no longer part one ninety-nine, right?
So that'll go into what?
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be your corporate bylaw. Well, I do have some comments on your language, if you don't mind.
Okay.
When you're ready, when you're ready.
Go. In H, Gordon, or something?
Yes, H. Um, it's around the twelve month thing, it's, it just, it's it's a thought for you to think of having the sentence read this way. In addition to penalties otherwise provided for zoning violations, the select board, after notice and hearing, may revoke for up to, oh, may revoke an STR landlord's right to operate an STR for up to twelve months, if it finds that the STR landlord, and then you got the call, and then you have your three things. Because maybe they don't want to do it for twelve months, or mandatory twelve months, maybe it's somewhat minor and they can revoke for less than twelve months.
Sure.
It's just a thought on rewording
Anybody object to that? And I think that's fine, I don't think anybody's going to object, yeah, okay.
Do we need to have in, um, violation numbers, the, the zoning? Uh, this, assuming this ends up in zoning, the zoning violation? Who the enforcement officer is of this, and every
Now, zoning, zoning, we already say it in the zoning bylaw, it's our zoning enforcement officer.
And our vi- and our violation's already in there, right?
Uh, the whole right
Penalties are in there, and the enforcement mechanism, there's two
All there. Yeah, okay.
That sounds good.
Uh, what else, Gordon?
Three or more violations, I'm just finishing the three issues. Accru- three or more violations of this section within this section or just three or more zoning bylaw violations, which could be not here. Could be noise, it could be, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't know, I, I don't mind it saying this, I'm just thinking more broadly. Uh, then this failed to provide update, oh, I think that's a good one. Or, so you do have the update information thing that I was asking about earlier, but you just have it here, twenty days. So if you lose your, you know, you got twenty days to report, I think that's more than reasonable. This failed to provide access to STR properties for inspection, failed to comply with orders. Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with any of those three, I think they're, they're all legitimate.
Okay, so let's close this phase of the discussion, I, I also sent around some information about what Great Barrington is thinking about doing. And, uh, Great Barrington has what Gordon calls a corporate bylaw, I believe, anyways, appears not to be a zoning bylaw. And, um, it was enacted last year after considerable discussion and controversy. And this year, there are three articles, uh, about to be decided by their town meeting on May first, uh, that would retract some of the, the requirements that were added last year, one is article thirty-nine, which would eliminate the prohibition on having tenants offer rentals as short-term rental. So we've already talked about that tonight, we have a position on it, I believe. Article forty is to add language, um, preventing the town from hiring certain kinds of people to enforce the bylaw.
What, what does that mean? Certain
I, I can't imagine that this is going to pass.
Does that even mean hiring certain?
It's sort of like when Congress passes a law that says you can't, you can't study gun safety.
Uh, yeah, right.
Uh, can't, we don't want to know how many people are dying.
Yeah, right, that's exactly what they do.
Uh, and then article forty-one is a repealer of two paragraphs into the regulations. And I don't know if any of this is going to pass or has any even remote chance of passing. I bring it up sort of for political reasons, because I think this, this topic is likely to be controversial in Lee, uh, as well, and, um, I think we should keep an eye on what surrounding communities are doing.
Yeah, we're not doing this one until fall, see, what, in testicle waters?
Yeah, yeah. That's sort of the conclusion I keep. Oh, yeah.
And North
Our time with this, yeah.
Adams has gone through it, and Lanesboro, too.
So the, the big question is, do we want to do a zoning bylaw, or do we want to just make a referral to the selectmen for a corporate bylaw?
Can it be, I mean, if we do a zoning bylaw, then we're going to have to
That's to pass by two-thirds.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. A corporate bylaw would be by what?
Majority. Fifty-one.
I mean, what do you, what does this feel like?
Um.
What does this feel like? It, it kind of similar to our bed and breakfast.
Yeah, and that passed with no problem, actually, in the eighties, late eighties.
But I mean, it's
I
And, and if this, this doesn't pass, then there's still no regulations.
Right, and I don't see that, I mean, I don't see anything super, you know, offensive. You know what I mean? Like, even if I, if I owned one and I was renting out, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm looking at this, trying to be open-minded and say, gee, if I was an owner, I don't see how this is so onerous.
If, but on the other hand, if, if you don't want it next door to you.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they're
Well, I already got one, so I understand the issues that are there, too.
But I think it addresses the issues.
Yeah, no, I do, too. Well, that's why I like the thing about the property showing the boundaries, it's like, that's all I hate, people locking their dogs on our field, and my dog goes crazy.
That's got to be irritating.
Oh, yeah, very, it's like, I like it, that, okay, you're showing awareness of that, and not only that, the owner of that property's been very good about laying down the law, you got to walk your dog here, and just people, people ignore it. So it's not always the landlord or the owner that's the problem.
Right.
And like you said, Buck, it's freaking renters who ignore, you know, this stuff.
I think there's a third interest, too, the motel hotel people.
Yes.
Who's on this?
They're, they're going to, they're a protectionism.
Well, they want, they want the same regulations to apply to their competitors as applied to them, I understand.
But this is a bonus for that, because right now, who's going to check smoke detection, CO detection, if it's an owner occupied? Nobody's going in your house, looking at any of that, right? No, so this makes the levels
Better than nothing, but I think they might say we want six more things added to the requirements.
Well, tell them to do it during the public hearing, because you can't do it at town meeting.
They may want limits on number of days a year.
So that's what Lennox did.
And, and it looks like Great Barrington did, too.
Yeah, I think they did, I think they both did.
You want to add?
Well, we could think about it, we could think about it, right?
I'd like to read Great Barrington and Lennox's, I, I'd like to read Great Barrington and Lennox's, a little more wide.
Lennox was very protect, they're, Lennox, the, the in-owners wrote it.
Yes, oh, I know.
That was their whole objective, and if they could say none, they would have.
I agree.
So that's just where they
Thinking about the number of days, though.
Well, remember, it, it brings, if you're going to have it, you're going to have it, and it brings money into the town, not only by the taxes, but by the people that it does bring into the town. Into our town.
Commercial activity.
Commercial, into our town, not, not Lennox, not Stockbridge. So, I mean, if you want to read our guestbook, they hit all the restaurants right here.
That's, I was just going to say that, the, the people who rent next to me.
One park just seems to be the place.
Oh, yeah.
That's appealing when they go by, they love it.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, the master plan committee is going in that direction, too, there's a feeling that Lee has not really hit hard enough on the tourist issue. We've, we've been second for a hundred years behind Stockbridge and Lennox on tourism. And we still, you know, fund chamber activities half the level of Lennox, and we get something like half the service, and there's, there's a feeling on the master plan group that we should probably be doing more to develop tourism as an industry in town. And so having short-term rentals to do that, I think, would be
A help.
Consistent with that, that goal.
Well, and we get the firehouse to be a museum, and we have another destination in downtown, other than to drive through and just stop for
Go to Lennox.
Yeah, and go to Tango Water.
All the
That's right.
What other places do we have to stay in town? It, it's limited.
Yeah, you have the hotels. Right, no, I, I get it.
The other issues we're going here is, keep talking about affordable housing in the area, wow, these STRs are going to turn into long-term rentals any longer. So we are
They already have.
Well, you know.
That changed, no, that, I honestly, honestly I think that's a fallacy, it, it is an argument that, that you'll hear against it. Um, but i- if you're going to do that, you're going to do that, if you're going to do STR, you're going to do that, it's not one, you know.
You don't see the case where somebody who's doing STRs would be so burdened by the new Lee regulations that they would prefer to go to long-term tenants?
No, they're, they're just going to say
It's a hard case to make, isn't it?
They're going to say, I will
I don't see that this is onerous to anybody, yeah, that's what I mean, I can see some of the other towns.
Yeah.
I can see that they're trying to keep them out, but I, I mean, I think it's great that you put the affordability issue in there, you know, so that, because I was thinking, yeah, gee, maybe when they do the Eagle Mill, I'll apply for five affordable housing, and then rent them out to Tangowood people, you know, that's great that it's, they can't do that.
But that's important, because that'd be
Well, no, I mean, on weekends, if I just rent that
Oh, I see.
I'm saying? Yeah, it's like
I'd like to, I'd like to get a sense from the board as to what we think our schedule is on this, are we going to do a final draft, one more draft, and then a public hearing sometime over the summer? And send it to the selectmen?
And our attorney.
And the town, and the attorney, and, and to the town for the fall meeting, which is going to be September-ish, October-ish, Gordon?
Probably.
Or next spring, you think, you think the fall?
I think we're looking to do one in the fall.
It has to be within six months.
Okay.
Your, your hearing has to be within six months, so don't hold a hearing until you know
So when do you think we should think about a hearing?
Well.
Sometime over the summer?
Within six months of the
Right, we want to make sure that they're going to have a special town meeting in the fall.
Right.
I see, okay, and then wait, wait until you warn the
Yeah, until we know the warrant's coming.
And then how much time do we need before then?
Ten minutes before we start the meeting. All we need is your recommendation, we need draft language, and then we need your recommendation. But
But we have
Put a month ahead, two months ahead of time, that's
Select board has, or, planning board would have to have their public hearing before.
Yeah, you have to do that, and come up with a recommendation.
I mean, sometime during the summer, you guys are going to set the date.
Yeah, I hope.
The main item is the public safety, right, for the, for the fall meeting?
Yeah, we're hoping that, that that gets to the point where we can do that.
So that'll, that's a controlling factor, if that goes slow, then you can't really, yeah.
We'll probably hold a little bit.
Right, so, um, what do you, what do you all think about the zoning versus general? I mean, I don't know if I can ask for a decision tonight, but, um, I think we should make that decision soon, before too much longer.
You might want to just check in with Jeremiah to see what the upsides of each might be compared to the other, I don't know. He may have an opinion on that, he may not, he may not have an opinion. I can't say that I have an opinion yet necessarily.
All right, so this is something we'll think about a little more, we've got time. Matt Carlino, anything you want to add, are you still there, listening?
I am, no, I'm good, I'm, all is good.
Okay, we got, uh, two others, Matt Colmer, you're still on, you got anything you want to say?
I'm still here, I, I just have a couple food, food for thought things, if this isn't zoning, then there really is no enforcement from that perspective. Um, and the other thought is that if, if the select board can pull their right to be an STR, you might want to have registrations go to the select board admin. There's just two thoughts that I had.
You mean go to them, you mean after the clerk accepts it?
Like, you might not want to have the clerk involved, you might want to have the, the select board admin take, actually handle those registrations.
Okay.
Handle the license, right?
Well, it would be a certificate or a license, yeah, we might want to also check with Jeremiah. We might want to also check with Jeremiah. Should it be a certification? Should it be a license? Because a license can be revoked.
Well, anything can be revoked.
You're right.
License usually involves some idea that we're not accepting everybody. We're, we're setting some standards for admission to this license. These people, all they have to do is say, you know, fill in the check, pay the check and fill in the boxes.
Well, they have to.
But there's no test. There's nobody, nobody says, you're not a, you know, upstanding citizen. We don't want you to. That's more like licensure to me. Licensed attorneys, you licensed doctors.
Yep. And, and home improvement contractor registration. That's where you don't have to prove that you're anything, but you got to poll.
But you can lose it if you screw up.
Right, yes. And so, yeah, I get, I get the difference between a registration.
Yeah.
And a license, be it an alcohol license or a underground storage permit license. Those are something you have to have the fire department sign off on.
Then it's issued by the board of select.
And a license for, well, alcohol.
Right. And those, well, board of select. And, and those are, those actually have to be done. Some of them have to be have a public hearing. You don't want public hearings for this. You just want it to be an administrative act.
Kathy Hall, you're still around? You got any thoughts?
I am. No, everything's really great. I think one thing that might have helped anybody that's watching this or will be watching it on CTSB would be if you had done a screenshot of the things we're talking about rather than just reading everything out. But it was very clear. Of course, I've been listening to this short-term rentals for a while now. And tonight's presentation was great. I'm starting to understand a lot more than I did before. So you're doing a great job.
Thanks, Kathy.
Take care.
Okay.
I know if Matt was done with his suggestion.
Oh, Matt, did you have more? Sorry. Matt Colmer?
No, that was, that was it. Thanks.
Thank, thank you. All right. So I think the sense is I'll do another draft with the changes we made tonight. We will continue to think about bylaw for zoning or bylaw not for zoning. We'll look into other towns. We'll look into maybe Lennox if we're interested. We'll look into Stockbridge if we're, or Great, was it Great Barrington? And, and we'll talk about it again. And then back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Can't believe we're this close to done on this one. I mean, I watched, I watched Lennox. I watched Great Barrington. Just they, they started with this little tiny bylaw and it turned into whatever they, oh my God.
Well, we aren't, I appreciate you saying we're close to done, but I don't think that's an accurate description. We've got to face the town yet. We'll see.
We face Gordon tonight. Come on, come on. Wait a minute. You don't know zoning, y'all. You get through past Gordon, you're.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about what's coming up at town meeting, too, because you don't have another meeting before then, do you? Before, do you have another meeting before town meeting?
When is town meeting?
The 11th. Maybe you do. Maybe it's.
We might have one.
We do. Yes, we have one.
I, I think that, I don't want to do it right now.
Already did. Already set.
Okay.
Because we.
I could take a look at that before we hit town.
We added a couple of words at.
I have no idea what happened.
That's all we did. We changed those words we were talking about. Because we were all set, because we had discussed and all of, we're on the same page in here.
Because I know Jeremiah was good with, if we wanted to change like the setback distance from the entire lot to half the dis, you know, half the, whatever the setback is. He said he's, because, because I don't think you should give the whole lot. But anyway, that's one of the things that I wanted to talk to you about and see what you guys were planning on doing. But I don't want to talk about it if it's not on the agenda. If you can put it on the agenda, I'll talk to you about it. Because I'm planning on making some kind of amendment if you think you're doing the whole depth of the lot.
It's not too late.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
That, that.
And that's what I asked Jeremiah. Could it be an amendment on the floor? And he said, yes, it could be because it's actually, you're giving away more. Now you're, if we adopt, if we change it, we're actually giving away less. So he looked at it as less new power. And, and so he said that would be acceptable. So, because I asked him first of all, and I said, I want to make sure before I, before I.
Don't think it'd be making it more restrictive?
No, he says, he said that it actually would be less, less harmful or less change, less of a change. Think of it as less of a change.
From status quo.
And status quo. If you go with the full depth to reduce. So everybody came to talk about, nobody came, to talk about the full depth. And if, if nobody objected to that, only to go partway, would be less, it's less.
He wants to give the future boards a little power, not as much as we claim.
Right, right, basically.
Oh.
And so it's, it's an acceptable amendment.
Yeah, right, right. So anyway.
Give us less new power than we asked for.
Anyway, that's, it's, it's just, I think, I'm going to speak against it if it's the full depth of the whole thing. That's all. Just a fair warning, you know, I, no, no animosity. I just, this is my stance. And so I may make the motion. If it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass.
Bourbon afterwards.
You bet your life we will. Might even have two.
How do we share screens from this setting? Can you do that? Can, we can't do that.
You, you can do that. We've done it before.
How can I do that?
Yes.
Or you could be host with a laptop and.
Right. Right. Yeah, or, or you could have a laptop here.
Here, set up as a second.
Well, no, as, as the primary. And then you can.
There's enough wires for that. Yeah. You got to use this thing or the, or the plug.
I'd have to be like.
Are you on Zoom right now?
No.
Well, you'd have to go on the Zoom.
Yeah.
And then you can be the host. They can make you the host.
And you use it.
Okay.
Using.
It's really pretty simple once you.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'd log in. Yeah, we could do that. I think that'd be good to do.
Well, then people can, I mean, you know.
Saying that you're asking if there's not any more meaning in advance.
Yes, and I'd like it on the agenda just to discuss the final versions of those two. So that I know what the final version is because I haven't seen any printed change.
We'll give you a public comment.
You're a heck of a guy. You're a heck of a guy. I'll get here earlier. I don't want to do it in public. I want it on the agenda.
We will ask public. No, we'll never.
We'll do that.
Don't do that. I won't even discuss that. Beth, yes, please put Gordon on the.
No, no, I'm, yeah, you can, no, what, what I'm actually saying is you have your, the warrants out. We know what we want to say. We're going to approve that. Okay, it was approved. We've got the warrants being posted. What I was asking the town attorney was, okay, if we make a change at town meeting, and let's say we want to amend a zoning bylaw, we have to be very careful. Because if you amend it to be more restrictive than you guys had your hearing, you can't do that. But if you want to lighten it up a little bit, then you can. It's like you can't ask for more money. You can ask for less money if it's a money article.
I feel that you're, that we would be restricting the landowner more on.
Yeah, and that's not the way they, they're looking at, he's looking at it in reverse. Yeah, sure, sure.
You're going to say his amendment's out of order?
I do.
Yeah, well, we'll have Jeremiah rule on it. And Jeremiah is the one that told me it was okay. So you don't want to embarrass yourself either. Or you do.
We'll see it that way. Okay. Well, we'll talk about this next, next meeting. On the agenda, yes. We might already have, so.
No, I, I'm just, I haven't discussed it. I'm just, I'm just saying we need to talk about it as an agenda item.
All right. Anybody else got anything going on?
Question, when are you doing the ADU discussions? Because I do have that to look at. I have not finalized the review of it.
Did last meeting.
Oh, okay. I'll look at what you've got. All right, no problem.
Oh, no, wait a minute. That was for.
No, additional.
No, the, the ADU, we did not, we changed the. So ADU is, is as it was.
Okay, well, I'll take a look at it.
What, can I just ask a question? I, I didn't quite hear Gordon. What was the one that he said he was looking to vote against?
Matt, I'm looking to vote against giving the extension of any zoning district into a residential district. Carp wants to go the entire way, whatever, no matter how far their lot goes back. Because let's, just as an example only, the Route 102 is a 200-foot setback. And I believe that giving them 50% of whatever that setback is, which would be an additional 100 feet, should be more than enough for anybody. Because I feel that giving them as much as they've got is too much of an intrusion on the residential people who already put money into their houses and don't want to have a business stuck closer to them than they already know 200 feet by right. So this is going to come as a shock to a lot of people anyway. So that's, I, I don't believe that it should pass, given the language of going the entire depth of whatever the, whatever the lot is. That's all.
Subject to planning boards.
So even special permit, it doesn't matter to me. I think it's subject to 150% would be enough. You know, I think, what's that?
Yeah, if, if even with special permit, they could only go.
Yeah, with a special permit, they would go 50, they'd be allowed to go 50% more, which.
More restricted than what we.
It just, I asked, that's why I asked the attorney and he said, no. As long as you advertise it as the entire thing, if you don't give that much, it's less restrictive than it to the neighbors and all. It's like looking at the whole zone. You got to ask.
Not to the landowner, okay.
You got to ask the town attorney, man.
But is it 50% of Gordon?
Whatever the setback into their zone is, like the RV zone is 200 feet. So by special permit, you could go 50% of that on Route 102 from this frontage depth, the route, all the way from the OPLI district at Corey Hill, all the way to the Stockbridge line on the west side of Route 102, was changed from industrial to, to rural business. And so what?
There's a 200-foot setback.
The 200-foot is not a setback. It's a zoning district.
Oh, okay. It's a 200-foot from the.
Zoning district. So I'm saying.
Wide zoning district.
Yes, so get an extra.
It's a 75, it's a 75-foot setback, though.
Right, yeah, but that's, so, so change the setback, you know? If, if that's a concern all the way down that district in all parts of town, I think 75 feet's too far, Matt.
I do, too, but, but the thing is, if we change it there, it goes all through the RV.
That's correct. And the other RV zones are out Route 20 on each side of town. And so go look at them, you know, 75 feet would be too far there, too.
Yes, I agree.
It's just, it's, it's too restrictive for the lot owners, no matter where you live. Rural business, the building shouldn't have to be 75 feet back.
So you're saying 50% of whatever the setback, whatever the zone line would be today? Or are you saying 100 feet?
No, I'm saying 50% of whatever, I think they're all 200 feet. I mean, just, let's look at the map.
That's going to be hard to explain, Gordon. You're going to say.
I've already got confused.
From what, from the center?
No, no, from the, if, it depends on where this, where your zoning map, does it, is the zoning map in the center? Or is it at the end of the public right of way? I have to look at the map.
But here's the problem, going out east.
Yeah.
Eastly especially.
Yeah.
It's not defined as 200 feet, like.
Okay, so what's it say?
It doesn't. It's arbitrary.
It doesn't jig and jag. It's a straight line, right? Okay, well, we'll look at it. And whatever each lot, and each lot owner would be able to.
Take a look at those lots.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I get it.
Places it's wide, places it's narrow.
Right. So you'd get.
Just you think of 100 feet as what you want to propose, that's all. It's, it's.
I can do that.
Go measure anything, you know.
Fine with me. Just know that I, I'm going to fight giving the entire property.
I understand.
That's all.
Trying to save you a minor hassle over, you know, how you measure what you're, what you're asking for.
I think we're all, weren't we all in agreement that 100 feet would be kind of, that would, that would cover the setback issue of 75 feet? Well, I guess it would be only in split zoning. It wouldn't be in all of RV, but at least the 102 stretch.
100 feet. Building level. Oh, yeah, by a lot, by a lot.
I mean, I think the 100 feet is actually fine by me and I, I would never vote for a project that would be harmful to the residents anyways, but I guess the argument is we don't know what future boards will do. So, I mean, I'm fine with that, an amendment for the 100 feet, if we can do that, if it, if it's, if that's something we can do.
Yeah.
We're going to talk about that next time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Can't debate that now.
Okay. Despite what you may think you've heard just now, we're not talking about that.
So, hey, Matt, Matt, before you hang up, Matt, do you happen to be, do you happen to be at your home?
I do.
Okay. Do you mind if I stop by in a minute for something totally different, non-planning board oriented?
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, stop by.
It'll only take me five minutes or less. Thank you. That's all.
Yeah.
Because I don't have your phone number. I don't know how to get hold of you.
I think, I think we're 8:06, two hours. We knocked that out. Very good. Another motion.
Thanks for all, thanks for all the work. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, all in favor?
Hi. Yes.